Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, December 16th Regular City Council Meeting. Our last meeting of the year, and we have a 480-page packet to go with it. Please join us for an invocation and salute to the flag led by Mr. Dean.
Let's pray. Good gracious, how we Father, as I look my brother and sister up in prayer tonight, we're reminded that you ask very little of us, and you make very much of what you can learn. Lord, we just ask that you guide us and help us to avoid underestimating those gifts that you give us. Lord, we ask that you give us strength to be faithful for the talents and treasures that you give us as well. In this Christmas season, we're reminded that unto us a King was born, that King is Jesus Christ our Lord and Savior, and it's pouring this thing we pray. Amen.
Amen. Let us live in the consummation of the light of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with everlasting justice for all.
This meeting is by order. Madam Colonel Hossman, Councilmember Golding here. Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Councilmember Jansen.
Here.
Councilmember Sutton.
Here.
Councilmember Wagner.
Here.
Councilmember Walters.
Here.
Mayor Hossman. Here. Moving on to approval of minutes. Item A.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting held on December 2nd, 2024.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B.
I move to approve the minutes from the city council briefing held on December 9th, 2024.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Golding.
Thank you. On page two of three, under the miscellaneous city managers items, the third item says Mr. Stephanopoulos stated briefing with Senator Clay Yarborough and State Representative Ken Michael would be held on January 6th, 2025. I'd like to have the minutes corrected to reflect that the council also discussed agenda topics that would be discussed with the legislators in the January 6th meeting.
Sir.
We have an amendment and a second. Any discussion? We'll just do a voice vote on that one. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, back to the motion as amended. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Minutes have passed. Approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Agenda is approved. I'm gonna go first on announcements today. I'm gonna take Chairman's privilege and in recognition of the fact that these jobs that we have up here as city council members are not our full-time jobs and that we have some lives and careers beyond that, our own John Wagner was recognized by the University of North Florida and International Healthcare Symposium as the inaugural North Florida Healthcare Leader of the Year. And that sounds like a huge cheer. It was for his work, not only in the healthcare industry, but in the community that we see every day here. So congratulations, John, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Ms. Golding.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I wanted to mention that our Jack's Beach Police Department had their children's Christmas party this past Saturday, and it was a wonderful party. I didn't hear how many kids attended, but I was only here for a short while, and there were already 115 people who had been here. I want to thank Sergeant Tater and her team and the whole police department who helped put that on, as well as the CPA volunteers, Mr. and Mrs. Claus. The kids had a great time. I would have liked to have come to something like that when I was a kid. Games, crafts, hot cocoa. And I also want to recognize Rockaway, who donated two gorgeous trees for the party, and it was very generous of them to do that. I also want to thank our police department, who is partnering with San Pablo Elementary School and San Pablo Elementary PTA to collect donations to stuff stockings for local kids in need. Our police department is amazing. And then also want to let everybody know, if you didn't know about it, that we have the 50th Citizens Police Academy that will be starting on January 9th, and the last class will be April 3rd. It meets Thursday nights from 6:30 to 9:30. If you haven't taken Citizens Police Academy, I highly recommend it. I think a lot of us up here on the dais have taken it, but you get a behind-the-scenes look into our police department, and I promise you, you will have your eyes opened about all the things that our police department does and what goes on in our community. There is a deadline to submit an application, and that's December 27th, and you can go to our City's Facebook page or the police department's Facebook page and find a link to that. Also want to mention that our Representative Ken Michael is having a town hall on Saturday, December 21st, from 12 to 4:00, and this is going to be at her Jack's Beach office, which is just north of here at 421 Third Street North. It will be an opportunity to meet her and discuss any issues or ideas that you may have in preparation for this upcoming legislative session. And also, on the fun side of things, I want to mention that today is National Chocolate-Covered-Anything Day. My kind of day. And then this Wednesday is Answer the Telephone Like Buddy the Elf Day. Does anybody know how Buddy the Elf answers the telephone?
Please demonstrate.
Buddy the Elf, what's your favorite color? So anyway, and then Friday is National Ugly Sweater Day. So anyway, all kidding aside, though, I do want to acknowledge the holidays that are coming up. Hanukkah begins December 25th and goes through January 2nd. Christmas, of course, is December 25th, and Kwanzaa starts December 26th and goes through January 1st. So for all of our neighbors who celebrate Hanukkah, Christmas, or Kwanzaa, I wish you a very happy Hanukkah, Christmas, or Kwanzaa, and Happy New Year to everyone. And it's been a pleasure serving with all of you this year, and I look forward to a great 2025.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Golding. Mr. Jansen.
Now, along with the very boring stuff, I'm just gonna recap what we talked about at our council briefing last Monday, kind of bringing up the speed. Had our last quarter pension meeting of the year, and happy to announce that our pension has done the best it's ever done in the past 40 years, number one. And then, number two, we're doing better than 75% of all pensions in the United States. So had ourselves on the back for an amazing pension board doing a great job for our employees. And then, secondly, the lead priorities for my policy committee meeting is affordable housing and impact fees. We don't have any impact fees in Jacksonville Beach, so that's not gonna be an issue for us. And affordable housing, we'll see how that pans out, because it's gonna be directly associated with the LIV Local Act, and I expect that there's gonna be some glitch bills coming down the pipe in reference to that. So we'll see how that pans out as the year progresses.
Thank you, Mr. Jansen. Mr. Sutton.
Thank you. And just to repeat, second, what Councilwoman Golding said about the Christmas party and Santa visit, it was certainly well-attended, a load of kids were here, and if anybody would like to see a picture of Chief Smith inside that little gingerbread house, I have one. Highest bidder wins. And just wanted to bring up one thing in this season of joyous occasion and celebration, that I wanted to kind of lift up the Wingate family. Owen and West are great partners for myself at Florida Blue, and they're good partners for us here at the city of Jacksonville Beach. And anytime you lose someone, it's difficult, but West lost his wife on the 11th way too young. And I know Councilman Jansen and Councilman Wagner and myself were childhood friends of both West and Owen and Rhonda, and just to recognize Jenny at Wingate and ask that you keep the Wingate family here, thoughts and prayers, especially this difficult time.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Mr. Wagner.
So yeah, thank you for mentioning that, Councilman Sutton, and you know, I know our families' hearts go out to them. West and I played poker and football together, and you know, those type of relationships are hard, so our thoughts and prayers are moving as well. Change topic a little bit. So not only was Saturday a beautiful day because of what the police department did with Santa here at City Hall, but if you experienced downtown at all on Saturday, you would have been so proud of this place. So we started our day at the museum with the Christmas Express. I'm not calling it the wrong thing, but I'm getting close. There were kids there and games and all types of fun stuff. Leave that, come over to City Hall, see the Christmas events, and then just the number of people that were out for the decked-in chairs was just literally amazing. The restaurants looked full, everything just seemed to be just like people wanted. Maybe one day a year, but I think it's a good day for us to build on and really kind of keep in mind, as we target this family-friendly environment, this family-friendly downtown that we want, I mean, we have some really good days, and so we really have a lot of wonderful things to build on. Just wanted to share, if you didn't get a chance to experience that, it was heartwarming. So, thank you.
Mr. Jansen.
Yeah, just, Mr. Sutton reminded me, if you hadn't heard the news today, there was another school shooting, and so if you're inclined to pray, please pray for those families in Madison, Wisconsin, where there were several victims in that deathly shooting.
We are all across the board with our announcements today, but since you brought up the Beaches Museum, I will say we had a record-breaking Beaches North, that's my day job, I run the Beaches Museum. We had a record-breaking Beaches North Hole Express, huge success. And then on Thursday, we will have our last event of the year, our last event of the year, which is Christmas at the Cabin, open to the public. Come on over for some festive cheer. And then on the 26th, to tag on to Ms. Golding's announcement, we are actually having our first-ever menorah lighting. So we'll be working with Habadi the Beaches to host that over there out in the park by the train. Any other announcements? Seeing that, we'll move on to courtesy of the Florida visitors, I do not have any speaker cards that are not attached to an agenda item. Anything else? Okay, consent agenda.
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda carries. Okay, moving on to city manager new business, this is kind of a different one for us. I think this is the first time I've been involved in a bid protest since I've been on council, which we all know is a long, long time. But I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Stephanopoulos to give us a background.
Thank you, Mayor of Council. This item, as the mayor indicated, is with regards to a bid protest related to bid number 2425-01, which is for dune walkovers, our annual program to replace dune walkovers here at the beach. Back in November, on November 15th, the city received a bid protest from Constructco, which is the second lowest bidder. It was within the timeframes of our procurement policy for filing a protest with regards to the bid award. The bid award process that we have, or the bid protest process within our procurement policy, is a two-step process, and the first step is through the city manager's office. After evaluating the bid protest that was filed, the bid protest was rejected by the city manager's office. They did, however, file an appeal and did so within the timeframes contained within our procurement policy. As such, the appeal is heard by the city council for final determination on whether or not to issue the bid protest or to deny the bid protest. We do have representatives from all of our key departments here tonight that were involved in the process. We have finance, procurement, public works, and representatives from our consultant firm at Florida Waters here, should have any questions for them during the appeal process. With that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to the city attorney, who will give you a little bit more specifics as to what your role is tonight in the decision-making process.
Thank you. And the city manager already covered the vast majority of it, but under our bid protest process, at this stage, once it's, and also the actual request of the city, they did do that in the written appeal, and then otherwise, your purchasing policy does not give any more specifics, it simply says the decision of the city council shall be final. So you're gonna hear whatever evidence you hear, you can ask any questions of anyone that you need to, but if you choose to approve the appeal, essentially, I think you're finding that you found an issue or a problem with the procurement process, and if you choose to disapprove or deny the appeal, the solicitation award, the recommended award, would be upheld. We do have a subsequent agenda item to award this bid, which will take shape based on how you handle this item, and I will gladly answer any leave of questions that have a pass. Thank you.
Okay, so this is again a little bit different than how we normally run our meetings and our agenda items, but at this point, we'll have an opportunity for public comment. I don't have any speaker cards on this issue, but if anyone would like to speak in favor of the appeal, if you'd like to come up to the podium, give us your name and address, we'll have three minutes for you to address the council.
Good evening and thank you for allowing us to be here. My name is Joseph A. Lane, L-A-N-E. I'm with the Lowndes Law Firm in Orlando, 215 North Eola Drive, Orlando, 32801. And with me is Brandon Jose, one of our counsel, and that's our presentation personnel. So I have a few minutes to talk, so I'm gonna talk and try to be as succinct as I can. I guess I gotta say a little background, hoping this will make better sense, because I don't know what anybody up here has by way of background in the subject matter of what we're talking about. Public procurement, which is what you do here, is largely based on advertising what you want and then collecting normally hard bids, meaning specific dollar bids, sometimes proposals, but tonight we have a hard bid. But in between the two points, the public procurement law is very clear that you, as the owner, public owner, must be clear as to what you want and the requirements for the work, and likewise, the bidders have to respond to what you want. If that doesn't work, we have a short fuse between the two. We're here tonight in a word because we think, when you look at these documents, I'll go through them very quickly, it's very clear the apparent low bidder did not comply with the information and requirements you wanted for this project. So that's why we're here. Our request is that our appeal be granted, and Constructco be awarded the project because they are the, in fact, the lowest responsive responsible bidder. So to get there with our protest, I don't know whether y'all have that up there or not. No?
Yes.
Oh, you do. Okay, thank you. We say this in very blunt language. The apparent low that you're intending to award to has not complied with your instructions, has not complied with your instructions. So under Florida law, which is enforced all the time by the appellate courts, you must reverse what has happened here because you're not getting what you proposed on or proposed for. In particular, the problem is that you requested the bidder have a general blank or a general contractor's license number, or right below it, an underground utility contractor's license, general contractor's license, or under that, a line for a marine contractor license. The difference is basically this, and that's an or, and I'll tell you why we think that. The GC is an unlimited license. The GC can perform underground work, or he can subcontract it, either way. But that's other than another type of contractor, which we don't go into because it's not relevant tonight. Everybody else is a Division II contractor, which means they're a specialty contractor. And as a specialty contractor, you can do the work within your specialty, and you can subcontract work that is within your specialty because it is within your license authority. But if you're not, if you're not a Division I, you cannot just wholesale subcontract work. Now, to continue on a second.
If you could just kind of wrap up really quick, and we have the council have opportunities to ask you questions as well. I just want to get an opportunity to get everybody on the board that wants to speak.
Okay, I can't cut this which so short, but I will do everything I can.
You will try.
I will try. Your bid form, which is in our package, and you can look at it, has a line, I think it's on the top of the second page, if I'm remembering right, fill in your GC license, or in the line below, fill in your underground utility license. You might say, well, why? If you look at the bid spec, the work involved here involves some underground circumstances where they cannot predict ahead of time what they will find, and they say as much in the bid spec. So you need somebody who can do the underground work, or you need a general contractor who can do any work, including subcontract to an underground contractor. The problem here is that the party you're intending to give this award to wrote in to the top blank, he didn't write a general contractor number in because he's not a general contractor, and he didn't write any other numbers in, he just wrote in a marine contractor license. And as we have said in our protest, I won't spend the time to go back over it, it's in the protest, a marine contractor is a Division II specialty contractor. He can do what is within his authority in the statute, which is not underground work. He cannot subcontract underground work. So in essence, the apparent low bidder has not complied with your informational requirements. Are you a GC or an underground utility contractor?
I think we've got the crux of your argument on that. If you don't mind, we'll go to see who else needs to speak and then give the council an opportunity to deliberate.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the bid protest? Is there anyone who would like to speak against the bid protest? Okay, seeing no one else from the public would like to speak on this issue, can we get a motion, please?
Okay. I'm gonna make a motion to disapprove the appeal of the bid protest for bid number 2425-01 for the construction of 20 dune walkovers.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Mr. City Attorney, can you just please, again, for the council, clarify again what a vote to disapprove means?
Sure. So there's now a motion on the table. City Council is welcome to discuss it, ask any questions of anyone, but based on the motion on the table, if this motion is approved, the bid protest would be denied, and then your likely next step would be on the next agenda item to award the bid to the original low bidder, if you so desire. Motion to deny means, to disapprove, that's on the floor. If this passes, we would deny the bid protest. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the motion to disapprove the appeal. Is there any questions or comments from council? Mr. Corrigan.
Mr. Barron, so is there underground, are there underground utilities to be addressed here? Not that we're aware of, the only underground.
Mr. Barron, I'm sorry, can you just come to the podium? Mr. Lane, if you want to just take your seat, we'll call you if we have any questions for you. I want to make sure everything is audible to anyone who may be listening, as well as to the court reporter, who is here in the room.
Dennis Barron, Public Works Director. To our knowledge, there isn't any underground required. The underground work that would be required would be to remove the existing structures, pull them up from the sand, and dispose of them as part of demolition, and then ultimately to be able to drive the new piles to support the new overhead structures that go in above hand, and that would be the only underground work that would be coordinated.
And we, this is a continuation of the dune walkovers that we just did, how many did we do last year or the year before?
We did 17 last year, and that's the same project, it's a new set, a different set of 13 in 2025, and then the subsequent seven in 2026.
Okay. And to your understanding, was there encountered any underground utilities during any of that work?
No, sir.
The city attorney, does, aside from the protest, does the lowest bidder, the current lowest bidder, do they, or do they have a license that would allow them to do this work? Are they, aside from the complaint that they are not able to do the work, which I'm not 100% sure according to our Public Works Director, that they need to do underground utilities work, is the current bidder able to do this? Because I know there was a question about being a marine contractor versus a general contractor versus...
So in your packet, I just want to show what was written down. Exhibit F in the packet is the bid proposal form from Marines, I forget the, the current low bidder.
CNH.
CNH, yes. And they list a marine specialty contractor and a contract number. In the Florida Administrative Code, which is rules set out by administrative agencies in the state of Florida based on statutory authority from the legislature, Rule 61G4-15.100 is the rule for certified specialty contractors, and under paragraph 1B, there is a definition for what a marine specialty contractor is qualified to do, and I'm paraphrasing the gist of it, not the entire paragraph, but it says a marine specialty contractor is qualified and certified by the board to perform any work involving the construction, repair, alteration, extension, and excavation for, and it lists several items after there, one of which is specifically listed as dune crossovers. So when I read that, I see if someone who has a marine specialty contractor can do repair, alteration, construction regarding dune crossovers. Beyond that, I don't have technical experience, but that's what I read in the Florida Administrative Code, and I hope that answered your question.
It does. Thank you.
Mr. Jansen.
Yeah, so I did review those documents. I did see where in the code that it did line up with a marine contractor, and I did get the answer about the underground utilities from our attorney earlier today. Question for you, I don't know if it's for you or our city manager, has the low bidder done work for us previously?
So from my understanding, that question was checked out, and neither Construct Company, the appellant in this request, nor CNH Marine, neither one of them have done work for the city. Our third bidder, which was the highest bidder in this instance, was the one that constructed the 17 from last year.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Walters.
Yeah, Mr. Barron, this is not quite on point, but it's weighing on my heart, so I want to ask. On the 12th Avenue South walkover that was constructed some time ago, it's on my street, and when it was built, it was very nice, and then in a short period of time, underneath the stairs, it became filled with sand, and then after a few more years, the whole thing was filled with sand, it became, it's unusable. So even insurance that these new walkovers are going to last?
So the newest walkovers, including the ones you're talking about, are constructed at the new deck elevation of 17 foot. At 17 foot, that is supposed to be three foot above the engineered height of the dune. Now, engineered height of the dune is exactly what the Renourishment Project did, they put it at 14 feet and walked away. Once they walk away, the wind... Once they walk away, the wind and the sand and everything that's blown in will change those dunes to actually be what dunes are. So some will take over that new height. That's why we build at three-foot deck elevation above the engineered sign of the dune. Once it does take over the walkover, we don't go back in and clear the sand for the dune. The dunes remain as to what the dunes are, and then so ultimately, the only constriction to that would be how high we ultimately raise. We've stuck with three feet above the engineered height since we began the rebuilding process, which was started right as I came in five years ago.
If I could just ask one last follow-up. The walkover on 9th Avenue North has two-by-twelves along the bottom to prevent sand from piling in. I looked at schematics as best as I could find him. Are these, are these new ones going to have that feature?
That's an individual design question, I don't have that, I'd have to review the plans, and then get back to you with an answer for that one.
Thank you.
Ms. Golding?
So Dennis, can you tell me, the contractor that did the dune walkovers previously this past year, did they have a general contractor's license, or a specialty marine license? Do you know, a marine specialty contractor license?
I don't know that answer, and I did not print their submittal, so I don't have that data handy. Although, do either of you have, is that by chance the...
I don't have it on either.
You're saying you can go get it?
If I can pull the bid response, it'll take me a couple minutes, but I can go do that.
I mean, to me, if we awarded it to a marine specialty contractor previously, I mean, I think that would be good to know.
They had both, they had a general and a utility.
Come on up here, this is Michael Klink, he's our consultant with Four Waters, who represented us in this. Go ahead, I don't know who you are. Michael Klink, the Four Waters Engineering, we helped put the bid documents together. Greenway Bridge LLC had a general contractor and utility license, that they listed for both.
But not, but not marine specialty contractor?
No.
Okay.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, I just want to clarify and remind council that this bid protest is based on this bid. So while some of these questions are good for the big picture, we should be focusing on our decision on what was in this bid package, and whether or not you agree with the merits of the argument brought by the bid protester. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Mr. Lane, I'm going to give you an opportunity to provide some closing statements that I'm going to hold you to for three minutes, please.
My closing statement is this, I fear I'm not being heard. We do not question whether a marine contractor can construct the overwalk, that's a carpentry job above the ground, with some posts in the ground. We're not talking about that, we're talking about the utilities. And since you have the documents, if you will please read your bid spec, you will find a good two pages or more, where the city is disclaiming that the plans being provided accurately show all of the utility impacts that could occur on the project site, which is why I suggest to you, somebody wrote into the bid document, what is your general contractor's license, or what is your underground utility license? This was perceived by somebody who wrote that document, and wrote it for a good reason. If there is a conflict, if you need to de-energize a line, re-energize a line, be able to storm sewer impact, you need to be licensed to do that. And I fear you're not hearing what I'm saying. I'm not talking about the crossover, I'm talking about the utility impacts. So your document go on and on, being very careful, excuse me, too worn, and we are not telling you where all the utility conflicts could be, because we don't know. So that is why the utility license is very important, and also why the GC license is very important, because a GC can subcontract any work to downstream to a sub who's qualified to do the job. So this is a problem, this is not as clean as you think it is, sitting there saying, well, we've done it before, and we didn't have any problems. This job, please read the bid spec, as we did, and you'll see, there is disclaimer of accuracy of the plans, because they can't predict what will be under the soil. Simply stated, you asked for two types of licenses, and of those two, you got zero. You got a marine contractor license, and they can do certain things, for sure, and they can build the carpentry for the walkover, and they can put the posts in the ground for the walkover, but they cannot do utility work, nor can they subcontract utility work. So I don't know how to say it any more clearly than that, there's a material nonconformance in this response. And when there is a material nonconformity, your duty as the sea wall between the public, its money, and the work going on, is to instead give the job to the lowest responsible responsive bidder, or reject all bids and redid it. The case law is very clear, you have one of those two choices. But a choice is not to say, well, we're going to pull the covers over our head and hope it is okay. So that's what I have to say, and I see I'm out of time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lane. Any other questions or comments from council? Mr. Warren?
Sorry, the portion that you brought up, do we have the option to reject all bids?
If I may, we always put in our procurement, our solicitations, our invitation for bids, that city council reserves the right to reject all bids. Mr. Flores, did I state that correctly?
You're right, you're right, Barron. These are, with these, then I just asked that, just as a point of procedure. So these were last replaced, I want to say, maybe 10 years ago, prior to that, or maybe the ones that we're replacing now, is that correct?
I don't, yeah, I don't know the exact dates on when they were constructed, they were constructed at a height that allowed the dune to take them over previously, and then like I said, we've been making recommendations and systematically replacing them across the board to get them all 49 replaced. Well, we're only talking about 20 right now, 13 this year, and seven next year. If it is 20 of our 49 that we have, this is also the last 20 of our 49, so at the conclusion of this, we would have them all reworked, and hopefully to a new height that won't be taken over, at least the majority of them won't be taken over by the dune.
And has there been any contact, any ground, underground utility interference, or anything like that, has anybody come across that that you're aware of?
I mean, we are aware that there are some intercontinental telephone cables that come onshore, we know where those are at, we also know where our outfall structures are, so the stormwater outfall structures that go from the end zones out to the beaches themselves, most of them are already denoted on the prints as to where they are, we avoid construction on top of those, obviously, for maintenance purposes, so we've engineered from the beginning to be away from those things that could be in the way.
Mr. Reiner?
Just for my clarification, if I recall reading the comments correctly, we only have, there's a window of time available for construction of these to occur, right? It's outside of our turtle nesting season, is that...
That is correct. Subsurface work has to be done during non-turtle season. Non-turtle season started November 1st, it usually runs for approximately six months, which puts us right near the end of May, to be able to, for the June 1st, start eternal season again. At that point in time, they can continue subsurface work. Every day, they have to meet with the Beaches Turtle Patrol to get their area cleared, and everything they're going, when they're going on and off the beach, to make sure there's no impact to turtles. With the blessing, they can continue to do subsurface work, as long as the turtle patrol clears, and they have to clear every single day of every single workday. So this does shorten our construction time, since we're already at the end of December, to where this could impact the feasibility of getting the construction completed within the timeframe.
That was, thank you for that, the end there, that's the point I was trying to understand is, so if we were to negate all of these and do the process over again, we're also probably foregoing the ability to accomplish much in 2025, correct?
That is 100% correct. If we, if we reject all bids, we would have to start the process over, it's about four months, by the time we get to an award again, we would be right in the middle of turtle season, and you wouldn't be able to do anything anyway, so any subsequent rebid and re-advertising, we would have to push to a 26 slash 27 award, or all 26, and then push for 2020, all the 20 that are left to be done in 2026 at one time, rather than splitting them like we did. We split them like we did systematically, to make this a little longer, because of the delay of getting this on the field, to be able to get this done, so we could try to get two batches done, one this year, and one next year.
Ms. Golding?
Mr. Barron, I'm looking at Exhibit G that's in our packet, and it's Section 01000, project requirements, and this appears to be, I guess, is that part of the, part of our requirements for the project?
So I might have to defer to Mr. Flores on this, because a lot of our bid spec packets are regurgitated from previous awards and previous done, so I know there's a certain amount of that material that is standard put in every contract, so I don't know if I want to speak to particular sections, I don't know if you have better knowledge of that, or not, as to what, if there's any particular section you're referring to, or...
Yeah, so under 1.1 Description B, work includes number seven, the contractor is responsible for managing all utility coordination, including but not limited to the following, ensuring that all utility coordination and activities are conducted in accordance with the requirements of the contract documents. And then in Section C, under public utility installations and structures, there's reference to, the contractor shall protect all public utility installations and structures from damage, and all public utilities damaged by the contractor shall be repaired by the contractor at his expense.
So most of that was all provided by Four Waters as part of our bid process, for that particular information. Some of that's not exactly accurate, because if they damage a telephone cable, it's not going to be on them to repair it, although it would be on them to pay the bill for whoever does do the repair, which would be the same thing, in essence, they would be covering the cost of those repairs.
So Mr. Lane's point about the fact that a specialty marine contractor cannot contract out utility work, is that, is that true?
I can't, I mean, I got to go by what the city attorney read earlier, when he talked about what work they specifically can and can't do by the legislature.
I don't have the technical knowledge on that question, I didn't see that question addressed that specifically, other than the contention that that is the case in the bid protest package.
Well, my concern is this, that if this is, if the things I just read are in the project requirements, and the bidder is not able to subcontract out the work, then we have a problem, I would think.
So if I may interject, from a legal perspective, I'm speaking legally, you just, you just brought up a very rational argument. What I'm not sure is in the records, for you all to determine if it's in the record, not me, is we've had assertions of that, but I don't know of anything in the record, any documents or of proof, that, that work cannot be subcontracted out by that type of specialty contractor. Am I conveying that clearly?
Mr. Lane, do you have proof of that?
We can provide that. But first, podium?
If you turn to page three of our appeal, we address this issue. Under Chapter 489, which governs licensure of contractors in the state of Florida, they define what a specialty contractor is, and I'll just read that. Specialty contractor, quote, means a contractor whose scope of work and responsibility is limited to a particular phase of construction, established in a category adopted by board rule, and whose scope is limited to a subset of the activities described in one of the paragraphs of this subsection. In short, it's a specialty license. A general contractor license, by contrast, is unlimited to what work they may be able to do or subcontract, whereas a specialty contractor license is limited to the description that was read earlier by Mr. Miggitt. Therefore, a marine specialty contractor, if a utility does come up, or an issue does come up, which is expressly required in the contract documents, that marine specialty contractor is actually not licensed to contract, to do that work, or to contract for that work, which is illegal in the state of Florida. The contract documents contemplate that these things may come up. In paragraph two of Form 01000-2 of the bid documents, it says, quote, "These data are not guaranteed as to their completeness or accuracy, and it is the responsibility of the contractor to make his own investigation, to inform himself fully of the character condition and extent of all such installations and structures, as may be encountered, and as may affect the construction operations." So our contention is simply, what if something happens? What if there's a de-activation that has to happen? Furthermore, in paragraph five, in the middle of the paragraph, it actually says, where public, I'll start from the beginning, where public utility installations of structures owned or controlled by the city, or other governmental body are encountered during the course of the work, and are not indicated on the drawings or in the specifications, and when, in the opinion of the engineer, removal, relocation, replacement, or rebuilding is necessary to complete the work under this contract. Such work shall be accomplished by the utility having jurisdiction, or such work may be ordered in writing by the engineer for the contractor to accomplish. So if that happens on this job, now the marine specialty contractor, who's been awarded the contract, can't even do the work. And if they do, they violate Florida law. That's the problem. And I'll just restate, this is our second round in the appeal. Don't overlook our first round, which was that the lowest responsive, the lowest bidder here was not responsive. You have to fly by instruments. You can't ask after the fact, well, are there utilities in the ground? It doesn't matter. What matters is, at the time the contractors bid on this job, they reviewed the documents that were provided. You may have deterred other contractors that were only marine specialty contractor licensed, because they saw two blanks, general contractor and underground utility contractor. They may not have bid on this job, because they thought they couldn't. That is the definition of deterring competition, and that's against Florida common law. That is one ground, one specific ground, that you must actually deny today for, you must grant our appeal for. The second ground is that even if you could, even if you had another blank for marine specialty contractor license, they couldn't even do the work, and they can't subcontract for the work. Both are issues, and our appeal should be granted for those reasons.
Mr. Barron, a follow-up to one of the sections that he read, it sounds like it, we have the option for the city to address the utility conflict, is that correct?
So Florida law requires prior digging, you have to notify 811 Sunshine, which is the location of those utilities. Every contractor, doesn't matter whether they're a marine contractor, a general contractor, a utility contractor, is required to call 811 to have utilities located. That doesn't require anybody, anything special to do, while coordination of that work that might need to be done, might need to have that other license that they're referring to, we're not aware of anything where this is, this project is going to get into any subsurface utilities. Beaches Energy, of course, is in control of the electric in our area, which is a Beaches Energy, of course, is in control of the electric in our area, which is a city utility. TCO is in charge of our gas, which is also a branch, a part of our city utility. In the event a phone line, or cable TV, or something else was damaged, it would be on that utility to do a repair. The plans clearly call for all stormwater appetites to be out of the facility of our digging, so we don't have the expectation that there is any utility coordination required for this project.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Horn?
But based on that, it still says on the form, that we talked simply about utilities, if we were to reject all bids and restart this process, which I don't want to do, because our citizens are way along enough for these overpasses to be built these walkovers, would the next request or proposal be worded so? Would it have these words attached to it?
All I can say is, I would go back to our engineering firm, and we would have a meeting post this meeting, to have that discussion and determine whether they feel it was improper or wrong, or whether they want to change anything. By all means, we wouldn't ship the same information out again. We would have some clearance made. A lot of this does defer liability away from the city, because while we're funding this project, we're not directly responsible. And what it truly comes down to is, the damager of that facility is responsible for the damages they do, just like when any other contractor goes through a sewer line, they're responsible for making that repair. City utility, but they're responsible for that because they broke it, they cut it. So that would be a similar, we would be looking for a similar response, or some clarification language in there. The other thing was, is I don't think we received any agenda asking us any of this information where it may have been asked in the past.
Just in an up-down vote, yes, I guess my understanding, Mr. Miggitt, is the appeal process, somewhere or the other, the next step would be to approve the award of the bid. And my concern is, I, as to me, me personally, is not very clear currently. I don't necessarily know if I would feel comfortable either direction. And I don't want to say no, and go back to the drawing, or maybe for our purposes, but what would happen, how procedurally does that occur?
So, our bid protest policy is vague on this, so here's how I see the potential options to you tonight. The bid protester is requesting that you grant their appeal, and they're also asking you to award the project to them. Here are just some of the options. I don't want to say these are the only options, and I'm glad to answer any questions or clarifications. This board's decision to make is not my decision to make. You can approve their bid protest, and also, on the next agenda item, award the bid to them. You could award, excuse me, approve the bid protest, choose to reject all bids and re-advertise. You could deny their bid protest, and on the next agenda item, award the contract to the current lowest bidder. Or you could deny their protest, and then on the next agenda item, decide to reject all bids and re-advertise. So I think all those options are on the table, based on the posture that we're in right now.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wagner?
I'm sorry, I think my question may have been answered. So, thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
I'd like to hear.
Mr. Wagner?
Again, the second part. So, it sounds to me like the risk of the concern physically occurring there, construction is somewhat manageable, and may not be as, may not be super high, based on what we're hearing folks share with us. But does that offset, I believe it's Mr. Lane?
Yes, sir.
Some of Mr. Lane's assertions around, kind of some of the absoluteness that he was sharing around what would be illegal or illegal for us to approve. And so, there's not much project risk, it sounds like, in my words, but I just want to make sure that the risk that Mr. Lane's sharing is, I want to understand that, and I think that counsel, Lawrence, tried to...
So, if I may respond, I think, if you disapprove or deny the appeal, I think you are necessarily determining that the other bidder, the other bid is responsive, and what's the other part?
Responsive and responsible.
Responsive and responsible, that it meets the requirements of a procurement solicitation, invitation for bid. So I don't think, if you find that the arguments have merit, that their license, the other entity's license is not sufficient, then you probably should not disapprove or deny the bid. But if you determine, it's not, it's about legality, it's not convenience, if you determine from everything you've heard, that you don't see an issue in this instance, that based on all the evidence before you, that it is responsive, the other bid is responsive and responsible, that may be a reason to deny. And I want to stop there, because I don't want to construe that I'm recommending either path. I was just going to some of the contingencies or possible permutations that could go on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Golding?
Mr. Behren, you said that if the contractor, or if whoever's doing the work, causes the damage, they're responsible for the repair.
As long as they've done their due diligence to call 811, make sure it was located, there's other rules that are, that go along with that. Obviously, it was mis-marked, or not marked ever, that would change who would be the responsible party for the repair. Obviously, if it's never marked, that would go on to whoever owned the utility for not following the rules of 811 Sunshine law, to make sure that their utilities are located prior to excavation. So, that would shift that responsibility for the 811 rule to the actual owner of the facility for not locating it, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from counsel? Mr. Lane's associate, what was your name?
Brandon Jose.
Jose, thank you, Mr. Jose. You brought up some good points for me, and I just wanted to, then I just sat down too quickly. I just want to...
I've been up and down for a while now. I can do this all night.
Because there's two different conversations here, and one is, does the selected contractor, do we think they're going to be able to do the job, even though it's not exactly what we asked for in the bid package? But it's the bid package that's the problem, and I want to know why we had two things that we asked for in the RFP that we have decided we don't really need, because the money difference is not that great to me. So what was the thought process? If you even want to, or can share that, on why did we decide to compromise on those two things that, when we put out the RFP, we thought were important enough to be in there?
So, officially, once the bid specs come to us for review, we review them in their entirety from the engineering firm, and then we, you know, go ahead and let Mr. Florries know we're ready for advertisement. So, the answer as to if it was in there, not in there, whether we thought it should remain or not remain, of course, wasn't apparent until the subsequent contestment of the bid. So I guess the answer as to why it was there, I would have to defer back to Michael to come back up and see if he has any answers to. Like I said, this is the second or third set that we've done. I think this is the third set we've, well, this will be the fourth set we've done, but this will be the third set that's under Four Waters. Four Waters, prior to Four Waters doing our dune walkovers, ETM Construction was doing our dune walkovers when they were a continuous contractor. Since they no longer have a local office, they are no longer doing that work. However, they are doing it for Four Waters, under the Four Waters umbrella, for them as a continuous consulting contractor. So, it's the same stuff that we've been using over and over and over for every one of you. So, I don't know, Michael, if you have any more to add, based on that?
Sure.
Come on up.
So, the bid instructions state that the contractor's license is required for covering operations of the project. Doesn't specifically say general contractor's license or utility license. It does have that in the bid form, which is the standard bid form that the city uses. So we thought it was acceptable that they put in a marine contractor's license, because that's what it states in the bid instructions. Doesn't specifically say you must have a general contractor's license or utility.
Thank you. Any other questions from counsel? Mr. City Attorney?
I just wanted to remind you of what the motion that's currently on the table, because we've had a lot of discussion. So the current motion is to disapprove the appeal of bid protest for bid 242501 for the construction of 20 dune walkovers. A yes vote on this motion, when it's called, would be in favor of disapproving the appeal. So it's just, normally, a lot of our motions are affirmative in nature. This one, a yes vote would be to deny, because that's the motion currently on the table. Just wanted to clarify that, so everyone remembers where we're at procedural. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, roll call. Councilmember Golding?
No.
Councilmember Horn?
No.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
No.
Councilmember Wagner?
No.
Councilmember Wilders?
No.
Mayor Hoffman?
No, motion fails.
So, the council is free to, right now, we have a motion that has not been approved. So I would say that legally, this item is still before you. Based on the most recent vote, it probably would be prudent to make a motion to, a suggested motion, if that was the case, is motion to approve the appeal of bid protest for bid 2425-01 for the construction of 20 dune walkovers. And let me clarify, if that's a motion that is made, that's just that their appeal, you found it legally sufficient, or had merit, and then I would recommend, it's up to you to do whatever you want, but the next agenda item immediately after this involves the actual award of the bid, where you can have further discussion on what you want to do specifically. But I think we need another motion, based on your last vote, is probably to approve the appeal of the bid protest, but of course, city council, you do whatever you please. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the bid appeal.
Do you want to read, do you want to read this, actually, so that you've got it on...
Yeah, I want to make the motion to approve the bid appeal of bid protest for bid number 2425-01 for the construction of 20 dune walkovers.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Horn?
And again, just making sure that this does not reflexively commit us to accepting their bid.
Not what the motion is currently on, too.
Any discussion on the current motion? Mr. Wilders?
Counselor, does this mean that, since going to, however this vote goes, we can still make a motion to reject all bids?
That is something you could potentially do on the very next, very next agenda item. Let me make sure I have it right. Agenda item B is for, you know, to award the bid, or you could choose to, to a certain company, or you all could choose to reject all bids, if that's what you want to do. So that was a long way of saying yes.
Any other questions or comments from counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call. Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilders?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. The appeal of the bid protest is approved. Now, item B, we have to decide what we want to do next. The recap of the options are to award it to the second bidder, or to reject all bids?
If I may, by your last action, it sounds as if you did find that there was merit to their argument, that the other bid had some issues. So, yes, I think you could choose to award the bid to, I want to make sure I have the right company name, construction calls. You could choose to reject all bids, you could have a discussion, there might be other options on the table, but all those are, all those are possible right now.
Can we hear from the city manager, or the public works director, on their thoughts on advising the council on how to proceed?
I'm not sure exactly how I would suggest we proceed. I know it's not a lot of dollar difference between the first and second bidder, approximately $60,000. The only concern I have is, is because we've moved this from the last agenda, and we're looking at this one, if we choose not to award, we will probably not go out to bid again until late summer, to try to pull this together for an award in October for next construction cycle. So we would lose our fiscal year 2025 construction of the 13, they would be pushed to 2026, and then I would have to meet with finance to determine at that point in time, whether we're interested in doing them, part of them in '26, and then part of them in '27, or now that all the money's together in '26, whether we would just want to push out one packet to say, award all 20 in 2026. But knowing that the subsurface construction timeframe, you know, no matter what, even if everybody works together with the holidays to get a PO and a notice to proceed in front of either contractor at this point in time, is probably going to be the end of this fiscal, the end of this calendar year, before we can actually get that in front of them, even if we are all here and can get it all done, it's going to take a lot to get that moving to where we can give the go sign. Keep in mind, either contractor has not ordered any materials, they haven't ordered any lumber, they haven't begun any of the work they need to do to be able to begin construction. So, the longer that process takes, the more it cuts into the non-turtle season construction timeframe. Our contract is pretty specific on trying to do 13 in the first year, and trying to do it during that six-month turtle season, non-turtle season. It could be very impactful to turtles, as well as the beach patrol for having, the sea turtle patrol for having to clear a site if they continue on beyond that turtle season restart. So, I tend to say yes or no, until we proceed ahead. If you say you'll award to the second bidder to construct, obviously, you know, we're going to work diligently to cut our PO, and then get in front of them for a conversation, because they might look at us and say, look, I can't, I can't get materials until February. We're not even going to be able to do this in February, or March, or April, and I don't know what they're going to say until we can get in front of them to see what they have. So...
But that would be the case with either?
It's going to be the case either way, unless we reject all bids, no matter which one of the two that get it awarded, yes or no.
Ms. Golding?
So I'm looking at the sheet that has the three vendors on it, from the review. I guess the, the court's response summary, all three of these are considered responsive and responsible bidders?
Yes, that review was done by Four Waters, and they concurred with our in-house review, that they were all, in our opinion, as responsible and responsive bidders. Of course, the legality of whether that is true or not, is what the appellate has made his case for, his claim, so that would simply, that's what you just have run to. So, at that point, this is on you to decide if they're responsive or responsible, or whether you want to award to one or another, or neither.
But based on the information provided, it seems that any of these three could, if they were responsive and responsible, could be awarded the bid, provided they were the lowest bidder, is that correct?
That would be correct.
Okay.
All that happened outside of the contestment. The contestment came after we made the decision to award, primarily based because all of them were equal as far as responsible and responsive, so then we deferred back to the lowest bidder, which was CNH Marine. Like I said, the contestment now changes that, so now we're talking about construct as the number two bidder, technically either being primary, or to, you know, to be declared, you know, to declare all bids, you know, out and start over.
Well, given the fact that all three of these were considered responsive and responsible, and we, meaning that we were prepared to move forward with any of these that were considered the lowest bidder, it seems to me that the thing to... lowest bidder, it seems to me that the thing to do would be to move to Constructco to award the bid to them because they're the next lowest responsible and responsive bidder.
I would say that's a correct statement.
Okay. I'd be willing to make that motion, but I am willing to defer to any further discussion.
Will you get the other two lights? Mr. Wagner?
So...
Light.
Yep. So my initial question is going to be, do we have opportunities in the way we structure... If we were to rebid this, structure the amount of work so that we may be able to make some progress in 2025 versus 2026? In other words, the bulk of the work today is in 2025, there's less walkovers in 2026. If we were to rebid the process, could we still like target making some...
So the logistics for that would be, I would work with Mr. Flores and work with our contractor to put together the bid packet again to fix whatever deficiency we would declare. We could put that back out on the street. They advertise on Wednesday, so if you know what this Wednesday is, which is two days from now, that's not going to happen because if Mr. Flores doesn't have a few days to review, it's not going to happen. Next Wednesday is going to be in the middle of Christmas. The following Wednesday is going to be in the middle of the new year. So in essence, we would be pushing to the first full week in January to be able to begin. It would have to be on the street a minimum of 30 days for the bid, so that's going to run through the entire month of January into February. At that point in time, I would be putting it back on the council agenda, which you guys would see in March. So when you would be making that approval in March, you would in essence be giving a contractor the month of March, April, and potentially May to complete all the work, whatever we predisposed as the amount of work to do.
I ask that there was a... If it was possible. It's shortening the amount of walkovers that were being asked to be built and then that three-month window accomplished on it.
Maybe. I don't know that we would want to do the work twice, if that makes sense, because we'd have to go back and rewrite this bid packet and either look at splitting them differently, which they were split fairly specific for financial impact reasons. I'm not sure... I'm not sure we would recommend somebody trying to do two or three this year and then hold the remainder till next year under a hurried circumstance. I think we would be better to do our due diligence, rewrite the spec package, and then re-put it out properly one time.
Was it a compliment shortening the spec package to that process? It was just purely the number of walkovers?
Right. But the minute we change that, we have to go back and rewrite the entire specs because it's all written as doing 13 in '25 and 7 in '26. So from the very beginning, all that information would have to be changed and we would have to pick a number, whatever that would be, say you do four this year and the remainder 16 next year. All that would have to be rewritten and then we could begin the process of advertisement. So I think that calendar doesn't change. Yes, we might be able to do it. We might be able to get two or three done, might be able to get five or six. You know, I was amazed the contractor last year got all 17 done within the construction cycle. They were up against the fence for the turtle.
So it's not off the table?
It's not off the table, but it probably won't be recommended by Public Works to proceed in that fashion. We will probably just wait and do it in the fall.
Are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was debating whether it was...
Okay. That's what I was picking up on there. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. One of the things I wanted to point out to council, and I believe it was Mr. Lane who brought it up, was the fact that if there was confusion or a misinterpretation by people who viewed this bid, they may not have bid on this project because of the language that they saw requiring a contractors license or a secondary license for utilities. The fact that we sent it out to 19 vendors and only got three, you know, raises a question of why we didn't get more. Clearly, this would raise a question of if the licensing was a prohibition on bidders submitting on this project, perhaps it may be best to have us regroup, put together the appropriate contract documents specifically looking for the types of licensing that we're looking for on this project, and put it back out on the street with the hopes of a better response, even if it means potentially doubling up the work for 2026 and having them knock out all 20 with any one particular year.
Except for the fact that we did have a bidder that met the requirements as we stated them. That was his point, was that there might have been others who only had a Marine Contractors License that wouldn't have bid, which that would really only have been an issue if we did award it to CNH Marine. If we had done that, then yes, everybody else out there who only has a Marine Contractors License should rightfully be upset with us about that. But if we are awarding it to someone who had everything that we asked for, they were the ones who took the time to put in the proposal. Mr. Horn?
Let the city manager address a couple of the things. I was thinking it was just my concern, we've already noted some deficiencies. Yes, we have a responsible and responsive bidder. Theoretically, we have several. But responsive bidders to a poorly worded RFP. And that's my concern is awarding this to anybody if we don't know, if we haven't worded... We haven't told people what we want. You know, based on the wording here, I'm not 100% sure. I'm trying to think of a way to phrase this. You know, we can go out and call 811. I've got a weekend off. I'll go out there and, you know, check these spots if you want me to. I'll take a little bit of looking writing down. You know, we just need to make sure that the citizens are getting what... Because if we verify that there are zero underground utilities, then we get different bids based on the appropriately worded RFP and citizens get what they need, hopefully financially, you know, to their best interest. Just my thoughts.
Mr. Sutton?
I agree with Mr. Horn. I agree with Mr. Sepopoulos. This is on us. And the ambiguity in this RFP is disappointing, and I'm not comfortable moving forward, you know, with awarding this to anybody. So I make a motion that we reject all bids for RFP 2425-01.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Sutton, a second by everybody else, that we reject all bids and rebid the project. Ms. Golding, did you have a comment on that motion?
Well, I had a comment that I was going to make before the motion, but this applies still. Mr. Baron, the contractor that did the dune walkers, dune walkovers in the previous year, was this the same RFP that we issued for that project?
So deferring to Four Waters in the rear who shook his head, yes, it's the same RFP, it's the same bid that we sent forward. So this is not an RFP, but it is a bid packet that we put together. I just wanted to correct it because RFP is treated differently than a bid packet. I'm sure Mr. Flores is freaking out over here because we're using them interchangeably. They are not the same. But anyway, yes, this was the same bid package that we had used last time.
And did we have any issues with the contractor and the construction of the dune walkovers and any misunderstandings or misinformation or anything like that based on the way that the bid package was worded?
So I'm going to answer that with yes. The reasoning is, is because we had several change orders that were listed on the last one, and a lot of that comes up as confusion afterwards in the aspects that we had awarded this, and then all of a sudden they say, "Wait a minute, we don't see this as a number or that's a number," or something's not included. There was a question brought up on the last set that was done concerning handrail placement. We were in our bid packet, I believe we stated that all elevated slopes were required to have handrails. So in our thought, and the same thing with Four Waters' thought, was anything that was a ramp would have handles and be included as part of that. The bidder came back to us saying that that wasn't really clear in the bid package after the fact, so then they put together a packet to say, "We believe we misquoted the project because we didn't assume all of these elevated ramps needed handrails." And so when we reviewed our packet, we said it was unclear, there wasn't anything definitive either direction, so we agreed to their change order for that project. So was there confusion? Yes, that's why we have this process. That's why we do contingency as well onto our projects is to allow us that flexibility to figure it out, you know, in the event we find something that was unexpected. We find granite boulders underneath all the sand, that happens. We can't guarantee. We tell them they need to put in a post and it needs to be eight foot deep. When they get to seven and a half feet and it stops because it hits a boulder, they have to come up with a plan to excavate that boulder out of the way to be able to get that extra half a foot. We can't just say, "Nope, we're sorry, we're going to let you have that one at seven and a half." We make them do the proper thing, which is the requirement says it has to be eight foot. So there are things like that that went with it. There was some other clarifying stuff in the addenda, but there was nothing that was beyond anything that was covered throughout the change order process.
And so those clarifications were incorporated in this bid packet that was sent out then?
Yes.
Okay. So my feeling is this, that again, we had three responsive and responsible bidders, and I don't believe that we have a need to delay moving forward with the walkover construction and awarding the bid to the second responsible and responsive bidder. So I will not support rejecting all the bids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Golding. You turned your way. Did you have some...
Sorry, I would just, for city council's benefit, you retain the right to reject all bids, but it can't be arbitrary. So even though there's been adequate instruction, I might recommend amending the motion along the lines of rejecting all bids because the specifications for the contract were inadequate or ambiguous or something along those lines. It's up to you. I just think that might be a better motion.
All right. I'll offer an amended motion that we reject all bids for bid number 2425-01 based on the...
Specifications.
Yeah, inadequate and inconsistent specifications.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to amend the original motion. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Madam Clerk, roll call. This is just on the amendment of the language, not the original motion. Sorry, go ahead. Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilders?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, amendment passes. Okay, back to the original motion to reject all bids based on the specifications. I don't want to try to restate Mr. Sutton's amendment, but you guys know what it was. Is there any other discussion on that original amendment? I mean, I'm sorry, on the original motion as amended?
Madam Clerk, roll call. Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilders?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
No.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
No, motion carries. Mr. Baron? A lot of people have put a lot of time and effort into this, and there's a couple of companies that were expecting to have some resolution to this today, and I'm sorry that we don't have that. But this further highlights the challenges that we are having in our own purchasing policies and procedures that this council has taken a particular interest in remedying. And I think that again, this is going to be a really time-consuming opportunity to do some of that. So unfortunately, we don't have a resolution today, but we look forward to the next bid package to come. Thank you, Mr. Baron. Thank you, Mr. Flores. Ms. Gossett, free work on this.
Give everybody a minute to figure it out. Anybody on council need us? Need your break? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break until 7:30. Whatever five minutes, four hours, whatever. It wasn't my fault. It was not my fault. Let's take our seats and move on to the rest of the meeting. Did you turn it up? Is that just a fake thermostat? It would not pass. Okay, so moving on, we have a number. Are you guys ready? Moving on, we are at the time of year where we do our board appointments. We do our board appointments in an effort to try to keep the terms consistent with the end of the year. So we will take it one board at a time and see how it goes. We'll start with the Board of Adjustment. It's laid out there as motions, but of course, they're just suggested motions if we have something else we want to do there. Mr. Mayor Protown, would you like to make the first motion?
Sure. I'm moving with the...
It was not my fault. It's 7:30. Let's take our seats and move on to the rest of the meeting. Did you turn it up?
Yes, 67.
Is that just a fake thermostat? It would not. It passed. Okay, so moving on, we have a number. Are you guys ready? Um, moving on, we are at the time of year where we do our board appointments. Your light is still on, Mr. City Attorney. We do our board appointments in an effort to try to keep the terms um, consistent with the end of the year. So we will take it one board at a time and see how it goes. Uh, we'll start with the Board of Adjustment. It's laid out there as motions, but of course, they're just suggested motions if we have um, something else we wanna do there. Um, Mr. Mayor Proton, would you like to make the first motion?
Sure. I move we approve the appointment of Jennifer Williams to a new four-year regular member term on the Board of Adjustments, the O.A., expiring December 31st, 2028.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on approving Ms. Williams to her next four-year term? Mr. Wouters?
Yes. I would like to say that I've attended many Board of Adjustment meetings and um, I believe it's 43628 where a very, where they are granting, deciding whether to grant variances. And um, the, the code specifically states that in order to grant a variance, there must be something peculiar to the piece of land not caused by the person seeking the variance. And I've seen a number of variances granted from, as best as I could tell, the hardship that they're, that they're stating is caused by the uh, scope of the development of the building they wanna put on the property. They just don't want to abide by the property lines as they should be. They wanna build out five feet from the sides and as close to the street and the alley as they can. And I think we should, the LDC should implement our vision plans. And so I hope we'll think closely about who we reappoint. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wouters. Any other comments? Madam Clerk, roll call. Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
No.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman? Yes. Motion carries. Item two?
I move we approve the appointment of Matt Metz to fill the remainder of the unexpired regular member seat on the Board of Adjustments with a term expiration of December 31st, 2025.
Second. We have a motion and a second. So this is not a new appointment or renewal. This would just move Mr. Metz up into the regular member seat. Any questions, comments, concerns? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Wouters?
No.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes. And item three?
I move we approve the appointment of Laura Turney Tierney to fill the remainder of the unexpired first alternate seat on the Board of Adjustments with a term expiration of December 31st, 2025.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
No.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes. And the fourth item is to nominate a new member that would take the place of second alternate. Um, Ms. Golding, you have your light on?
I'd like to nominate Douglas Dell.
Can you make it in the form of a motion?
Yes, I nominate Douglas Dell.
I move that we, sorry. It's written out here as nominate.
I move that we nominate Douglas Dell to the second alternate, to fill the remain, the second alternate position, to fill the remainder of the unexpired second alternate seat on the Board of Adjustment with a term expiration of December 31st, 2025.
Do we have a second? We have a motion on Douglas Dell and no second. Seeing that, motion fails. Mr. Sutton?
I'd like to make a motion uh, that we nominate Sidney Talcott uh, to fill the second alternate seat on the Board of Adjustment um, with a term expiration of December 31st, 2025. Second.
We have a motion and a second to uh, put Ms. Sidney Talcott on the Board of Adjustment. Ms. Golding?
Um, I just wanted to uh, I mean, we haven't had any discussion but um, tonight, but we previously had some discussion about Douglas Dell and his, his, his appropriateness for the Board of Adjustment and Ms. Talcott for the CRA. Um, so my thinking was that, that we would appoint Mr. Dell and put Ms. Talcott on the CRA. So that's what I would like to support tonight.
That, I completely agree, wholeheartedly. I thought Ms. Talcott was very well-suited for the CRA and um, and Mr. Dell correspondingly to the Board of Adjustment. So I, I agree with you. The consensus that we had coming out of the um, briefing where we went over this, uh, but there is a motion and a second on the table to put Ms. Talcott on the Board of Adjustment, which would take her off the listed eligibility for the CRA. Any other comments or questions? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Horn? Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
No.
Mayor Hoffman?
No. Ms. Talcott, please do not take that as a comment. If you help me with that, we had, we had another spot for you. Um, but thank you for your willingness to serve and we will be following up with you on the information of Board of Adjustment going forward. Okay, moving on to uh, the Planning Commission. Uh, item one would be the reappointment of Justin Lerman. Can we have a motion, please?
I move we approve the reappointment of Justin Lerman to a four-year regular member term on the Planning Commission, P.C., expiring December 31st, 2028.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Golding?
Um, I would just say that um, Mr. Lerman has served the Planning Commission for several years now, but um, based on uh, recent issues that have, that have occurred, um, I would support not reappointing Mr. Lerman to the Planning Commission and that is how we'll be voting tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
No.
Councilmember Wouters?
No.
Councilmember Golding?
No.
Councilmember Horn?
No.
Mayor Hoffman?
No. Mr. Lerman is not reappointed to the Board. Um, so now we will have the reappointment of Justin Henderson. Can I have a motion?
I move we approve the appointment of Justin Henderson to a four-year regular member term on the P, the Planning Commission, beginning January 1st, 2025, and expiring December 31st, 2028.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Henderson, for your service to the Planning Commission. Okay, so we are now at reappointment of Debbie Cole as the first alternate, but potentially she could be moved up to a regular seat since we have the vacancy created by Ms. Lerman. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, you have your light on now. That was gonna be my comment. She's, I would simply recommending move her into the... First time I've ever been one step ahead of the clerk. Better than the minutes. I know, I see it. I just had to brag on myself for a minute, like, jeez. Same, Ms. Golding?
I move that we move um, Debbie Cole to the, to appoint her to a four-year regular member term on the Planning Commission uh, expiring December 31st, 2028.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Cole, for your service to the Planning Commission. So now we have the first alternate and the second alternate position that are open. Um, would anyone like, oh, Ms. Golding, you have a motion for the first alternate?
I move that we appoint Dean Haddock to the first alternate position um, for a four-year term, beginning January 1st, 2025, and expiring December 31st, 2028.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Dean Haddock as the first alternate. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Haddock. We look forward to having you join the Planning Commission. And now for the second alternate, Ms. Golding.
I move that we appoint Matthew Filer to the second alternate position to fill, hmm, is that right? Would he fill the remainder of the unexpired, okay, unexpired second alternate seat on the Planning Commission with a term expiration of December 31st, 2027.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Matthew Filer in the position of second alternate. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Filer, for your willingness to serve and for becoming our second alternate. Now the fun one. So we are going to work on the um, membership of the CRA before we go to the chairmanship of the CRA. So we'll start with that and I would like to add one caveat. Um, I spoke with Mrs. Pavlosky um, a while ago when I realized uh, that we were gonna be losing our longtime member and chair from this committee and asked her to re-up for another four years despite the fact that she had stated she did not want to or wasn't planning on serving another term. Um, she's expressed that she's extremely flexible and wants to um, participate in CRA as much or as little as this council would like for her to. So I don't, if we decide to, um, she was also very complimentary of where the CRA is at this moment and the institutional knowledge that is now being carried in large part by the staff forcing that we've added to the CRA with Taylor Mobbs. So she feels very good about the place that the CRA is in and willing again to do as much or as little as we would like for her to do as a member of the CRA. So we have currently um, one renewal to consider, which is Frances, and then two vacancies to fill and possibly three vacancies if we decide not to renew Francis's term. Uh, so to start with her, would somebody make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the reappointment of Francis Pavlosky to a new four-year regular member term on the Community Redevelopment Agency CRA, expiring December 31st, 2028.
We have a motion. Is there a second to reappoint Francis?
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Jansen?
My only concern is, uh, brought up at the briefing was the, was Mrs. Pavlosky's attendance, um, missing as many meetings as she did, and now um, consideration of being a regular board member still, still resonates with me.
Ms. Golding?
Um, I mentioned this in the briefing. I do have significant concerns with Ms. Pavlosky's attendance in the past two years. Um, you know, I understand the concern with uh, institutional knowledge, but do appreciate the fact that she recognizes that there is institutional knowledge with the staff that we have. So I do not support reappointing Ms. Pavlosky and would like to appoint someone new because I think it's valuable to get some new and fresh ideas um, on the CRA.
I, and again, I did speak with her about the concern regarding attendance and she expressed that with some intention had been kinda sitting out a little more to give the new, the newly-formed alternates an opportunity to participate a little bit further. Um, she certainly doesn't want her 12 years of serving, 10 years of serving on this board to be disheartened by something like attendance issues because that she has certainly been a very active member of this board. But I would, instead of um, voting to remove her, I would ask that we just withdraw the motion and just not take that up. Can we do that? And just not renew her since her term is up. Would you mind doing that, Mr. Jansen?
Run that by me one more time.
I would, instead of voting to remove, to not, to remove her, I would rather just not vote and then just let her term expire.
Okay, I withdraw the motion and then we'll just let her term expire at December 31st, 2028.
Second. Does that work for you, second? Do we have to vote on her or can it just be a draw?
We just need whoever seconded the original motion to second the draw.
I second the draw.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for um, being amenable to that. So now we will move on to uh, reappointment of Mr. Whittington.
I move.
So not voting on that means she is not being reappointed?
Her term is expired.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Golding?
I'd like to move that we move Mr. Ron Whittington up from the first alternate position into the member position. No, he's not. He's per, he's first alternate.
And can you add?
For a four-year regular member term on the CRA, beginning January 1st, 2025, and expiring December 31st, 2028.
Second.
We have a motion and a bunch of seconds to move Mr. Whittington from uh, first alternate to regular member of the CRA. Mr. Horn?
I do, as Ms. Pavlosky's seat is uh, expiring, and do we have another one as well? Okay. Making sure. Another, another full seat? Okay, I thought I just wanted to re-bear. Thank you.
And, okay, so we have a motion and a second. Mr. Wagner?
I apologize for the time that this question's off, but I didn't know where to make it. So um, if somebody's already been appointed to a position, can they be brought up for a second position as well? So let's say somebody got voted into an, an alternate on Planning Commission and it turns out now that there's an extra spot on CRA and might, might feel that'd be a closer alignment? Are they allowed, are we allowed to bring them up as both or not? I know it's awkward, I just...
So in a general sense, there's a dual office holding prohibition in the Florida statutes. I don't know off the top of my head if it would apply to these two boards. I highly suspect it would.
Well, I, I think the intention would be, let, so to further my example, let's say one is the second alternate and one is a full member. And there's not going to be excluded another full member here.
I wanna make sure I understand correct. Someone would be on both the Planning Commission?
Nope, 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 just leave them alone. Not stay with the serving though.
I believe what you're asking is... I believe what you're asking is if this board has already made an appointment to a previous seat for, for an individual to fill a seat, and now that you see there's been a shift on this one, the person might be better suited to serve out here. Could you appoint them to this? And I think from a sequential perspective, David, maybe the question to you is, do they need to revoke their previous action and remove them from the board they've already been appointed to first and then reconsider appointing them to a separate board seat, on a separate board?
Yes, I would do it exactly as you just suggested, Mr. Stomopoulos. And then, of course, remember that if that does go through, then you may have another open seat on Planning Commission in this case.
Did we vote on John? Okay, uh, let's go ahead and vote on Mr. Whittington and then we will come back to you, John, and see what you're gonna do next. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes. Okay, a lot of lights are on now. I'm gonna um, start with Mr. Sutton.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Kevin Myers as a regular member of the Community Redevelopment Agency. I suppose that would be with a term expiring December 31st, 2028.
A motion to appoint Kevin Myers? Is there a second?
Second. The, the expiration would be December 31st, 2027, I think. Okay, I'm gonna straighten that out here.
Spreadsheets up here, guys. This is a really a situation.
I second.
Just taking a step up the first item since we were...
Okay, so this would be a full membership uh, in place of um, item one. Kevin Myers, uh, full membership on the CRA. Uh, and we have a second?
Yes, second.
And Mr. Horn?
Uh, sorry. Hey, that's my key.
Any other questions or comments? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
No.
Councilmember Horn? Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes. Okay, next item. So our regular seats are full now?
Yes, okay, next item, so our regular seats are full now, so we are moving on to first alternate. No lights are on, Miss Golding?
I move that we appoint, hmm, wait a minute, I lost my place.
The first one that we had discussed at our briefing was, well, Sidney Talcott.
Right, right. That was going to be my motion, and I just realized, oh, can't do that. Well, you can if we go back to... We just have to be willing to go back to the Board of Adjustment.
And again, that's why I wanted the City Attorney to weigh in, because I think before you can appoint to this board, you would need to remove from the previous board appointment.
Does that have to be before, does there any reason for asking? Because they're not actually on the board, turn them aside a little bit.
Just, in abundance of caution, I would recommend doing the revocation motion first if that's the pleasure of the board, but that's just a recommendation, you guys can do it in whatever order you see fit. I think it's just cleaner to show that there's not dual office holding if the revocation happens first.
And David, one follow-up question, I believe that Ms. Talcott's previous appointment was unanimous, does that mean that any of the council members can make a motion to reconsider the appointment?
I think it's a... It should have been unanimous because the mayor and I voted against it.
Does it have to be someone who voted in the affirmative who makes the motion to reconsider?
If it's a motion to reconsider, I think it could also just be a motion to revoke, that anyone can make, I think that's really, really sufficient as well.
Motion to revoke Sidney Talcott from the newly-appointed selection to the Board of Adjustments?
Second. Second.
No.
This is, just what a way to end the year, glad you're still sitting there. Any discussion on revoking Ms. Talcott's appointment to the Board of Adjustment? Madam Clerk, roll call. And we will go back to the Board of Adjustment at the end about should this motion carry.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, now you're not on any boards. Okay, we're going back to first alternate of the Community Redevelopment Agency, Miss Golding.
Sidney Talcott to the first alternate position to fill the remainder of the unexpired first alternate term on the CRA beginning January 1st, 2025, expiring date of December 31st, 2027.
Second. This is right about when we start to get a little punchy, we have a motion to appoint Sidney Talcott to first alternate of the CRA. Hopefully you'll get it, then you're on no boards. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries, congratulations, Miss Talcott, we landed the plane so far. And now, appointment for the second alternate, Miss Golding.
I move that we approve Mr. Matthew Roberts for the second alternate to fill the remainder of the unexpired second alternate term on the CRA with a term expiring date of December 31st, 2026.
Do a second. Seeing no second, motion fails. Would anyone else? Mr. Jansen?
I make a nomination of Karen Doherty to fill the remainder of the unexpired second alternate term on the CRA with a term expiring date of December 31st, 2026.
We have a motion for Karen Doherty as our second. Seeing no motion fails, back to Miss Golding.
I just, I wanted to make a comment, please, because I looked at the composition of the CRA, and because we currently have an attorney on the CRA in Ms. Megan Edwards, I was not leaning towards appointing Kimberly Law because I would like to see some diversity on the CRA, which is why I had moved to appoint Matthew Roberts for the CRA. So I just wanted, you know, I feel like we need to look at the CRA board like we would look at a nonprofit board or a corporate board and make sure that we are getting some diversity, and I would point out that right now we have a member who's an architect and construction project manager, a lawyer, oil refinery manager, former, and downtown property owner, a PR consultant, and then Mr. Haddock, I guess, whatever, oh wait, no, he's Planning Commission, sorry. Ah, I'm getting confused, okay. Who have we appointed now?
Nobody knows.
So, but I would like to say that I'd like to see us get some diversity of background on the CRA, which is, again, why I nominated Matthew Roberts.
Mr. Jansen?
Similarly to what Miss Golding said, that's the reason why I nominated Karen Doherty. She's with Summers and Doherty Architectural Firm, she's got a background, extensive background in architect and engineering, so I thought that would be a nice asset to our CRA that was diverse and not like, it'd be a nice eclectic mix for us.
Miss Golding?
Yeah, but we already have an architect on the CRA, and so, and looking at Mr. Roberts' background, he owns a business in Jack's Beach, and says he is familiar with residential single-family home, he's a real developer and a real estate broker, which I don't see that we have that on our CRA.
I would like to, instead of the going back and forth, since neither of your nominees were able to get a second, and considering the hour, and then we still have a couple big issues in front of us, I would like that we proceed without appointing a second alternate and look at a date in January, and let's just really focus in on the list. We have an incredible list of very qualified people for this board, but this is exactly why we have alternates, so I don't think we should be scared of having a vacancy, so I'm going to move us on from this topic, as long as nobody's going to have too much heartburn on that. Okay, now, the chair and vice chair for the Community Redevelopment Agency, what I'm going to do is open up nominations, the way we do kind of with Mayor Pro Tem, for the chair position first and then for the vice chair, and we'll, once we close the floor for nominations, then we'll each go down the line and give our vote. Mr. Horn, you had your line on?
I'd like to nominate Gary Patel for the position of chair.
Mr. Wagner?
I'd certainly nominate him.
Okay, are there any other nominations for chair? All right, well, we do not need to do a vote then because he is the only nominee, congratulations, Mr. Patel. And for vice chair? Anyone like to nominate for vice chair, Miss Golding?
I'd like to nominate Thad Mosley to be vice chair for the CRA.
Are there any other nominees for vice chair? Mr. Sutton?
Ron Whittington.
We have nominees of Thad Mosley and Ron Whittington, any others? So when, so we'll close the floor for nominations, when the clerk calls your name, just please state which person you would prefer for vice chair. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Jansen?
Whittington.
Councilmember Sutton?
Whittington.
Councilmember Wagner?
Whittington.
Councilmember Wouters?
Whittington.
Councilmember Golding?
Mosley.
Councilmember Horn?
Mosley.
Mayor Hoffman?
Mosley. Mr. Whittington prevails as the vice chair and our board work today and for the year, Mr. City Attorney?
Two things really quick, I would recommend, even though we just did votes, just because all your actions are through motion, perhaps a motion, it could be one motion, to nominate Mr. Patel as chair and Mr. Whittington as vice chair, I would recommend you do that, so it's by motion, and then we go back to the Board of Adjustment.
Miss Golding, oh, sorry, Miss Golding's light is on.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we still need to go back to the Board of Adjustment.
Yeah, he added that. Okay, Mr. Jansen, if you'll make the motion for the chair and vice chair?
I make a motion that we nominate Gary Patel as the chair for the Community Redevelopment Agency.
Go ahead and add the vice chair, so we just do it all together.
And then Ron Whittington as the vice chair for the Community Redevelopment Agency, second.
We have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes. Back up to the very beginning, Board of Adjustment, we now have a vacancy, can I have a motion to approve a member to fill said vacancy? Go ahead, Miss Golding.
So much. Okay, I don't know what the dates are, I've got to go back, but Alex Bertell is who I want to nominate, but where are the dates? And is this?
Which seat?
Yeah, which seat was it that we, was it?
The second alternate?
Yes, the second alternate. Was it the second alternate, okay.
Did you not want to go back to Douglas Dell?
Ooh, yes, I'm sorry, I take that back. I would like to, I make a motion that we nominate Douglas Dell to fill the remainder of the unexpired second alternate seat on the Board of Adjustment with a term expiration of December 31st, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, congratulations to all of you who made it through that, to the council for their deliberations and their hard work at the interview and reviewing all of these candidates. I feel really good about the state of our boards, and I look forward to seeing all of our new appointees get to work. So now, on to the meeting. Let's see, we are up to ordinance A, I think, am I right? Are we there? Okay, this is going to probably be Miss Ireland. Did anyone get board appointment bingo? I didn't hear anyone yell bingo, so I figured I'd ask. Well, first, your holiday gift from the Planning Department is the 2050 Comprehensive Plan, double-sided, we're saving trees, you guys. This is the second reading of the ordinance, as you will recall back in May, we voted to transmit the 2050 COP plan to the state for review, we received no objections or issues from any of the reviewing agencies. As you'll see in your memo, we've got six technical assistance comments from the state plan reviewer, and we met with them, the Assume staff and our consultant, to go over their comments and work through what would be an acceptable answer to them. So we got through that, that they're happy with our response, those have either been integrated into the COP plan where appropriate or our response addressed in the memos. So with an approval tonight, this will approve our brand-new comprehensive plan that we appreciate everyone participating in all the workshops and briefings and to get us where we are. I will note that there is, the version that you were given today is a little different than the one that was posted in the agenda packet for two things. One, the date on the front is December on this one, and the only thing that's different, there's no content difference, it's just the pictures and some of the formatting, so Kim Lee-Horn went through and found, at the beginning of all of our elements is a photograph, these are all now local instead of placeholder, so just wanted to point that out. And I'm here for any questions, and our representatives from Kim Lee-Horn are here as well.
Thank you, Miss Ireland. Madam Clerk, will you read the ordinance by title, please?
In ordinance of the city of Jacksonville Beach, Florida, transmitting proposed amendments to the 2030 Comprehensive Plan and also transmitting a new map series and data and analysis to the state of Florida's various agencies for review and comment, providing for adoption of said amendments and adopting a 2050 Comprehensive Plan with visions, intents, and strategies upon receipt of said comments and completion of the state review process, providing directions to the Planning and Development Department, providing for purpose and intent, providing for conflict, establishing separability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This ordinance for the amendment to the text of the 2030 Comprehensive Plan is before the council for public hearing and adoption on its second reading. Under the laws of the state of Florida, an ordinance which changes the text of any element of the city's 2030 Comprehensive Plan is a quasi-legislative proceeding. A quasi-legislative proceeding means that a governing body is acting in its rulemaking capacity, it is the duty of the council to arrive at sound decisions regarding proposed changes to the text of the adopted 2030 Comprehensive Plan, this includes receiving citizen input regarding any proposed text changes. The application has been reviewed by staff and the Planning Commission for consistency with other portions of the Comprehensive Plan, the council may hear from all interested parties. In the legislative determination of an amendment to the text of the city's 2030 Comprehensive Plan, the council's decision on a Comprehensive Plan amendment application is based on the criteria set forth in Section 34-1B2 of the Land Development Code, each member of the council is provided a copy of the criteria. I now open the public hearing on ordinance number 2024-8214. We already had our staff presentation, there really isn't an applicant. It's just Heather, okay. We, do you want to, let's see, we do not have any speaker cards, if anybody from the public wishes to speak, you can approach podium now. Would the applicant like to respond to any of those comments? No? Okay. Public hearing is closed, before requesting motion on this ordinance, beginning with myself, each of the members is requested to indicate for the record whether the names of persons and the substance of any ex parte communications regarding this. Are you about to tell me I don't have to read this?
Ex parte disclosures are not required for this one.
I take it all back. Is there a motion with respect to this ordinance?
I move that we adopt ordinance number 2024-8214 on the second reading, adopting the 2050 Comprehensive Plan for the city of Jacksonville Beach.
Second. Before opening the floor for discussions or questions by the council, please be reminded that our decision will be based on the criteria set forth in the Land Development Code, staff reports, the recommendation of Planning Commission, and public input at all hearings. Mr. Jansen?
I just wanted to extend my sincere appreciation to Kimberly Horn, Mark, you and your staff have done an amazing job, real thorough, and making sure you touched all segments of society in Jacksonville Beach. I'm proud to see the work that you have done moving forward, and thank you.
Any other comments? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, congratulations, and thank you all for your hard work on this item. Next up, item B, for backup, Miss Ireland.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Mayor. This is also a second reading of the ordinance to expand the sidewalk dining program to keep it a pilot for another five years and then expand it to Second, Third, Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth Avenue, just north between First and Second Street, I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Miss Ireland. Madam Clerk, will you read their ordinance by title?
In ordinance of the city of Jacksonville Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 28 Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places by amending Section 28-12, expanding a sidewalk dining program in the downtown incentive zone within the downtown redevelopment district, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, separability, codification, and an effective date.
Thank you, this ordinance is before the council for a public hearing and consideration on its second reading. I will now open the public hearing of ordinance number 2024-8214. We have one speaker card, Mr. Thad Mosley, who I believe we heard from on the first reading of this one as well, come on up to the podium, state your name now.
Thad Mosley, 37, I want to do all drive. The first reading, my comment was quite brief, thought about it a lot in conjunction with a lot of the other things y'all are doing, that we're doing here in Jack's Beach, and it's really part of a holistic approach. First reading, good questions, some good answers, good questions, good presentation by Taylor Mobbs. Thanks for what y'all do this evening, it's proof that it's not easy. But speaking of a holistic approach, things that fall out of that bag that are being worked on right now are sidewalk dining and have been participating in the middle of this area for 30 years now, 30-plus years. Slow and gradual, but I think this is good. First street was easiest, looking out at the Seawalk, you know, lawn and everything. The others were more challenging, but cut and fit, which I think Taylor touched on in some length in response to questions. Make it fit, make it better, particularly with two or three new developments likely to come in on new property that can be designed to take advantage of this. So that's sidewalk dining. The other one is boardwalk activation, and that's going to take a lot of thought, because it's tickly and prickly. The last piece that fits in with this is eventual parking lot renovations, big time. Our parking lots are pretty ugly. The fact that we're adding parking spaces to various other initiatives and programs, and some street ends, and perhaps on the corner lot at Second and Fourth, and so forth, gives us some flexibility to drop a space here, drop a space there for sidewalk dining, and perhaps a few spaces when we redo some of these big parking lots. We now have the public works and parks and rec guys who actually know how to landscape something that'll look decent next week, which has not been the case historically. I could show you pictures you wouldn't want to see of very expensive landscaping, it looks like poor stuff. Everything north of Second looks awful. These things address it, sidewalk dining, boardwalk activation, parking lot renovation. Some years ago, we had a really bad experience on Third Avenue North Street, and we converted from parking to fully pedestrian, and we had basically congregations of gangs, drugs, and guns. Sergeant Shackelford served some mighty fine time there. In one case, he actually picked somebody up and body slammed, and the gun dropped out of his pocket, and his buddy started shooting the air, ran all the way through the fully pedestrian and heavily seeded pedestrian-only access to the boardwalk and ran away, and none of the 60 people who were present ever said who he was, not like they didn't know. So this combination of the boardwalk and pedestrian and all that needs to be really carefully considered, and y'all mentioned a couple of times getting with the chief, he was around for this, he knows. So consulting with him will be very important, to make these different components fit together in a way that's positive and expands us north-south. Expanding east-west, the trails, y'all are working on that. This all fits together, it's slow and tedious, but thank you so much. We've got to pull these pieces together to make Jacksonville Beach the way it can be. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mosley. Anybody else like to participate in a public comment? Mr. Brown?
Yeah. I'm concerned with the...
You just state your name and address.
Oh, yeah, Casey Braun, 804 13th Avenue North, Jacksonville Beach. These are all commercial considerations and not community considerations. Things that we're trying to deal with are bike trails, crosswalks, parking issues, public safety, and all these things are necessary because of the amount of traffic we have coming into town and driving around town. And it's difficult to get around. I was on Atlantic Boulevard the other day, 3:00 in the afternoon, I had to do E-turns three times to make a turn, because you couldn't make a turn where turns were. And we're approaching that, and everything that's on this agenda is going to add into it. And when he mentions integrating, we need to integrate, not destroying ourselves in the course of doing what we're talking about doing, because these things look good individually one at a time, but I don't see a viable and attractive commercial pedestrian environment to be what they have in Daytona or Coney Island, New York. I mean, these are the examples that I saw in this program, and I think that we need to reassess and try to make things more community-oriented rather than more commercial-oriented. This sidewalk dining, what has the community responded to about that? You know, you had the two-year program to check it out, and it checks out because, you know, you walk down there, it looks okay, but what do the residents really think about this? We talk about getting communication with the residents. We need better feedback before we proceed forward to see what we really want to do. Anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Public hearing is closed, and can we have a motion, please?
I move we adopt ordinance number 2024-8218 on the second reading for sidewalk dining.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Golding?
I'd just like to comment on Mr. Brown's question about the community and what value the sidewalk dining may have on the community piece of it. And my hope is that because this is focused on restaurants, encouraging restaurants to come to our downtown area, that that will be places that I will want to go, and that maybe you will want to go, you know, instead of some of the other businesses that we have right now that neither of us want to go to. So our hope is that that's what the sidewalk dining program will help us do and help to make it more of a place that our residents want to go.
Not Coney Island.
Correct, not Coney Island.
I have never seen Coney Island used as an example of anything related to Jacksonville Beach or downtown at all. I'm not debating you, sorry, I just wanted to state that. Mr. Wouters?
So thank you for your thoughtful comments, sir. I would just like to say, well, I'm supportive of this initiative. I hope we can do more to support, I mean, we're giving these business public parking spaces, and that's fine, but I'd like to see us take the same approach with some other small businesses in town that have been brought before special magistrate, that are not being afforded similar privileges. Just thank you.
Any other comments? I just want to say, I think it was apropos that Mr. Wagner brought up the deck the chairs and kind of going from one event to the other, I did the same thing from City Hall to deck the chairs, and over on the side with Oaxaca and Chuckle Island Brewing, it was laughter and families and great food and just really what I would consider a vibrant walk down the street through Jacksonville Beach. I think this did not come out of a vacuum, this came out of years of community visioning meetings and talking to our residents about what they wanted, and one of the things that they wanted is a downtown that they want to go to and that they want to use. And being open and utilizing the great environment that we have here through outdoor dining and through good use of our public space was consistent, a consistent theme across every single meeting that we had. So I'm really glad that this has been a success so far and that we're taking steps. This is not a write, this is something that we will be working with, that the business owners to implement where it makes sense for our city and the direction of our downtown. I appreciate staff efforts on this as well, and I think this is just one of the best things that we've done in a long time, so I'm glad we're looking at furthering this program. Any other questions or comments? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. The last item of the entire year. Ms. Ireland?
I'm so hungry. Did anyone order pizza?
Why would you say pizza right now?
I'm sorry. Okay, so this last ordinance, we're calling it zoning in progress, and I worked with the city attorney on this, I'm going to explain a little bit what this is about, but since you, thank you very much for adopting our comprehensive plan. The statute states very clearly what the timeline for these things are. It does not become effective for 46 days. We were hoping, and our deadline to adopt it is beginning of January, but since you guys don't have a meeting in the beginning of January, we're bringing it to you a little bit earlier than the deadline. Our hope originally was that we would have the LDC ready to go at this point in time. We're very, very close. We're going to bring it to the Planning Commission in January and to council in February. But in the meantime, there's that little bit of a gap in time where we've got a new COP Plan that's adopted, and the LDC that's almost ready for the draft to bring forward for consideration and hopefully adoption. So on top of that, we also, staff would like some time to basically train ourselves, refresh ourselves, and the entire staff at the Planning Department, there's 12 of us, and even if you're not in zoning all day, every day, the questions at the counter are often zoning-related. So we need time to train staff, and we need time to make sure everyone is on the same page with the changes that have been proposed, and hopefully we'll make it to the end of the adopted LDC. Additionally, we want to make sure that we train our board members with what the new code is going to say, and not every change is going to be something that everyone needs to know, but Planning Commission is going to need to know what they need to know, Board of Adjustment and CRA as well, we need to know some things. So this ordinance essentially allows us to suspend processing of certain types of applications while we're in that little window of time that we have plans that are kind of in flux, and to allow us to do some training as well. So our goal is to have it as short amount of time as we can, allowing, the way it's written essentially, around a month, to get staff and the boards trained and up to speed on the new changes. And obviously, Christian and I anticipate a whole bunch of questions moving forward from everyone, including each other, to remind ourselves of what we did with the new code. So I'm happy to entertain any questions you have on this. I know it's kind of a new thing, we don't see very often.
Thank you, Ms. Ireland. Ms. Wagner, can we wait till we have the motion? Do you mind? Madam Clerk, will you read the ordinance by title, please?
In ordinance of the city of Jacksonville Beach, Florida, pertaining to land use and zoning in Jacksonville Beach, enacting a temporary suspension of certain applications, prohibiting the processing of certain comprehensive plan text and map amendments, rezonings, variances, and special exceptions, to allow city staff time to review, study, and prepare final amendments to the city of Jacksonville Beach Land Development Code, and allow city council time to adopt final amendments to the Land Development Code, providing for purpose and intent, separability, conflict, scrivener's errors, non-codification, and an effective date.
This ordinance is before the council for a public hearing and consideration on its first reading. I will now open the public hearing on ordinance number 2024-8219. I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Would anyone from the audience like to speak in favor of or against this ordinance? Seeing then, the public hearing is closed, and can I have a motion?
I move we approve ordinance number 2024-8219 on the first reading for zoning in progress, suspension of certain activities, and schedule a second reading for January 21st, 2025.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Wagner?
So just make sure that, so what we're going to do is suspend certain, accepting certain types of requests from residents, right?
Correct. So I'll give you an example. Let's say someone comes in and they want to request an increase in lot coverage for a pool deck, which is like half the applications or more than we do. Should the code go through as written, they're not going to need it. So we don't want to take their money and do all the work involved if they could just wait a little bit longer. Obviously, we don't know exactly, you know, what the end result's going to be. We're hoping it's what we've discussed with everyone in the end, but some things will be necessary.
So the reason I ask for clarification, the one thing I would ask for us from the city, just because we have so many different people that interact with our residents, is could we develop some talking points for folks to be able to use? Because some folks may, you know, they may be under personal pressure, get things built, trying to get things built by certain times. It may not, well, what we're doing seems from our seat on the bus, seems very reasonable and appropriate. It may not sit perfectly well with everybody else. So I'd just ask that we kind of go through the thoughts of, hey, you know, some good talking points for our staff, and then see if Jacob can maybe do something more detailed in our Tuesday for Tuesdays or some other communications, because I would hate for this to become a dissatisfier, when really there's no intent for it to be.
Sure. No, I absolutely understand it, and I'll ask the city attorney this question, actually, because, you know, the whole idea is to, again, all the things I said, take a pause, allow for training, avoid people applying for things they maybe don't need, but should we get an application in for something that maybe isn't going to be impacted, let's say, outdoor restaurant space, maybe not impacted by the code changes, that might be something that we can still proceed with. So I'd have to, we kind of have to wait and see what comes in before we make those decisions, but...
So if I may, I think in Section 3, as it's currently worded, and, you know, this is an ordinance, it will be another reading in January, near the end, it says, "The city will not accept any new applications for any of the land development approvals as described herein." So I think anything that this would apply to, and I'm sorry, at this late hour, my brain does, it's not at 100% efficiency right now. So I'm like you said, there might be some sort of applications that would not be applicable, that would be land development code and not be applicable. This Section 3 may be a way to process those, and I'd be happy, between now and the second reading, if we get any specific examples, I'd be happy to work at it with you.
That would be great, thank you.
Mr. Wouters?
Yes, I'd like to just understand, so will this make it easier or harder to get a variance?
This particular ordinance, no, it doesn't impact that, but the code is being changed in such a way that it might be easier for some folks to get a variance, but the end goal really is to not have to have so many variances. I mean, we are processing in excess of 200 a year. That's not efficient at all. So a lot of the changes that we've proposed to the code will hopefully decrease the number of variances that we are seeing, and also make it easier for homeowners in particular to make improvements to their property without that six-to-eight, you know, week delay in having to go before the Board of Adjustment.
So will it do away, like with the 10-foot setback, will it do away with setbacks?
No. No setbacks, lot coverage, all the same regulations we have in place now remain in place in the new version of the Land Development Code, some might just be different.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Second. Do you have a motion and a second? I'll have them sign if I have a say in it. Any opposed? Have a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, we will see you in 2025. Meeting is adjourned.